It is 05:05 and we are ready. And I guess we, you'll start it off?
Yep. So, good evening. The purpose of this presentation and this work session is to have a discussion on the solid waste collection franchise agreement and to discuss the next steps. So I've got a short presentation that's only about eight slides. I'm just going to go through these slides to kind of frame the discussion. So the first thing, out the gate, I'm going to talk a little bit about our current levels of service and our current garbage service. So our service collection is what you would consider two, one and one, which is four times a week collection. That's twice a week garbage, once a week yard trash, and once a week recycling. With that, the residents provide their own garbage cans and the town provides two recycling bins for the recycling service. We have an estimated about 1,250 customers right now. The charge to the town from, as part of the contract, is 1602. The charge to residents is 1695. So that covers any administrative costs. That's about $203 per year on average for the cost of garbage service to our residents.
That about 250,000 a year?
Yeah, yeah, right about. So the, just to give you a little, little history on this. The contract originated with Advanced Disposal Services and Advanced has been acquired by Waste Management and that was completed recently. The commencement date on the current contract was February 1st of 2015. The initial term was seven years. It terminates January 21st of 2022, which is why we're having this work session. And one of the key things as part of the agreement, it's the renewal option under Section 2.3. At the sole option of the town, this agreement may be renewed for one additional term of three years under the same terms and conditions as the initial term, including amendments. So in getting prepared for this and looking at the fact that our, the contract is going to be completed in January, this is the first, first part of the contract, seven years. Working with the commission, I put together a solid waste advisory group. So the, the commission approved that concept back on October 27th of 2020. We put it out for solicitation for residents to, to volunteer to be on this group. We ended up with six members. The group did meet four times on January 29th, February 12th, March 12th, and March 26th. Also, the commission approved the contract for Kessler Consulting, KCI, on January 12th of 2021. I don't know if you remember previously, they helped Dennis and the previous town manager with the, when we did this, I guess it would have been eight years ago, when it went out to bid previously. So they helped with the procurement and with the, the current contract that's in place. And KCI, again, is an expert in solid waste procurement for local governments and they did attend three out of four of the solid waste advisory group meetings. And so on the call, just, just also, I've got Mitch Kessler and Bethany Jewell are on the call. And so once we get through the presentation and if there's any discussion or any questions, again, there are subject matter experts and they can talk a little bit about, you know, the current state of the industry or any questions that the commission might have. I also, there were a couple of members of the solid waste advisory group. Kulakowski was the chair of the group and once I'm done, I'm going to give him a couple of minutes to, to speak on behalf of the group and then I'll turn back over to the commission for discussion. So the solid waste advisory group discussed several topics during those four meetings. Again, they had some more presentation at the beginning to talk about, just to kind of frame the issue. So they talked about the current service level and contract. They talked about waste management, assuming the contract from Advanced Disposal. They talked, had some discussions on the current state of the industry and had some good discussions with Mitch and Bethany on various questions that they had. Talked a lot about the escalating cost of new contracts for various jurisdictions. And again, like I said, Kessler's got quite a bit of experience with this and so they were able to give us some insight on, you know, how things are working for, for various jurisdictions that have gone out to bid recently. And then they talked about the pros and cons of extending the current contract. And so when it came down to it and looking at all the various, all the variables involved, but also thinking about the, the cost to residents, because this is a pass through and as you saw on that, that second slide, this is a pass through cost to the residents. So whenever the, that contract comes back in and that monthly cost gets passed through directly to the resident. So if we, you were to see a 25 or 50% increase, you know, that $203 a year could be, you know, 250 or $300 a year for, for residents. So thinking, you know, the economics of the situation as well as all the other factors. So the recommendation from the solid waste advisory group was to propose to, to town commission extending the solid waste contract per Section 2.3. And that's the, the option that I read to you a while ago. At the sole option of the town, this agreement may be renewed for one additional term of three years under the same terms and conditions as the initial term, including amendment. So I'm going to turn it over to Ed and let him speak and then get some feedback from the commission. But based on that recommendation, on the regular agenda tonight, on the consent agenda, is a recommendation to allow me to move forward with the extension of the contract. So if that's the direction that the commission wants to go, if not, we can pull that and change that. But just in, in looking at keeping things moving forward, I've got that on the, the agenda. At the end of this discussion, you know, once I know the direction, then when we get to the regular meeting, that's, that's what's there.
So first, let me say thanks for authorizing the advisory group. We, all six of us on the advisory group appreciate the opportunity to provide some input and do a little work for the, for the community. So, so that was really good. Stephanie was on as well as Steve Stanford, who's on the, on the Zoom right there. It was interesting for me that we had a real good discussion among the group. Everybody really participated and gave their thoughts about what was going on in terms of solid waste collection and what we needed and what we didn't need in terms of, of additional service. So the, the major conclusions that I took away from all of our meetings was that the, the current level of service is, is adequate for all the neighborhoods. We have neighborhoods on, on the north side of 50, on the south side of 50. We, we actually asked for another representative so the folks around John's Lake would, would have input as well. And everybody believes, all of us on the, on the advisory group believe that the level of service now is adequate. There was discussion about recycling and recycling education. We had a lot of discussion with Mitch and Bethany about what kind of materials and what kind of recycling is really being done now. But again, we, we think that with some education for our community, and that's something that the commission ought to think about and maybe budget some, you know, what's allowed, what's not allowed, what used to be allowed, it isn't anymore, kind of thing, is really going to be helpful. Based on the data that Mitch and Bethany provided, we saw no benefit to going out for a new RFP at this time, since we have the option to extend this current contract. Went out to an RFP, not to mention that it would be a lot more work for us here. The cost would probably likely go up 25, 50% as Steve mentioned. And really, we wouldn't probably get any increase in service for that extra money. So, so that's how we, we came to the recommendation for you, that we simply exercise that extension contract, extension clause in the contract. There was really only one risk that we talked about, in my view, and that was with the takeover by Waste Management of Advanced Disposal. Kessler reached out to Waste Management and they were really not enthusiastic about, about responding and about continuing this contract. We're a small customer to them, I think. The rates are fixed, would leave for the next three years. So, so they would, I think it was mentioned, they'd really prefer us to go out to bids so they could have a chance to raise their, their prices if indeed they wanted to bid again. So really, the only, the only risk we have is, is because they have a low interest, there might be a risk to performance and level of service. But there are liquidated damages clauses in the contract that say if they don't pick it up, then there's a cost to them or a deduction from their fee. So we think there's a way to manage and mitigate that risk. And so we think we ought to move forward with, with the extension. So thanks for all that.
Question, Andy. Yeah, I do, first of all, thank you to all six of you all. It's us that should thank you guys, you know, for, for stepping up to help us. It's, it is not easy for us to get volunteers a lot of times to do stuff. So people that do volunteer over and over and over again, we, you guys are like gold dust and we probably don't ever say it enough, but thank you for all that. My first question is, when we first were going away from waste man, and I have that same concern, you know, advanced, I didn't have a big problem, you know, everyone is going to have glitches and how you react to a glitch that, that makes the company good. And Advance has done fairly well. They've, you know, they've stumbled a couple of times, but you know, you get over it. Waste Management, I don't have a better term to say than had a horrible service. And that's what started us going to Waste Management or gone out to bid to begin with. We had to wait because Waste Management has a clause in there that we had to give them notice 18 months ahead of time. So that being the case, is that still in there somewhere that they have in their own policy? Because that means a year and a half we would have to start looking again.
That's not in the current contract that we have.
Okay, so it's nothing that they can bring to the table.
No, it's very clear with this three, three-year extension, so we would have a very clear end date.
I was shocked to see that clause. Somebody did their job right. Because usually it's by extension, by mutual agreement.
Or somebody did their job wrong on the other side.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's a great clause. So, and that was my main question, so I was, you guys.
I got more of a statement than a question. I just, Advance, I'd just seen so many times someone recycling in with the regular trash. And it just burns me up when I pay attention, what I put in there, only putting in number ones and number twos, rinsing all the cans and bottles out, I go through all that, and then they come with a regular garbage truck, but the regular trash in them, recycling in the same can. And that's happened so many times and I just feel like they're cheating, cheating us, you know, they aren't recycling. I'm not sure they even recycle anything if it's just going all to the dump.
Well, and that's something the staff will have to address, you know, will have to address that, you know, and making sure that, that the terms of the contract are being, being adhered to. So there will be, I'm expecting a meeting with Solid Waste or with Waste Management in the near future after we give them this extension and we're going to have to talk about the, you know, the terms of the agreement and making sure that we're, that us and them are both on that same page. That's, that's what we're expecting is the terms of the agreement.
And I understand trucks break down, like, you know, this past Friday, didn't pick up trash, it came on Saturday. I'm fine with that, understand that, but just the abuse of the recycling just burns me up.
And that is probably, and I have a comment about recycling too, but first, that is one thing that through the advanced contract that, that we have, that Waste Management simply does not do in their own contract. When they miss your day, it's simply stated that they come back on their next regular scheduled day. They don't come back and make it all up. You have to pour your trash back in or you leave it sitting there, whatever you're doing. So that is their normal operation is, and on holidays, the same way, if the holiday hits, you know, hits your, your day, don't even bother to put your trash out for Waste Management because they're not going to come the next day and they just pick right up. So this contract is really a blessing when it comes to that because Advance does that. I think when it comes to the recycling, and I'm with you, if, if we go to the trouble to do everything, especially to the detail that you're doing with rinsing stuff out, it should be done the right way. But I would guess that one of our first steps is going to be really educate the town on how and why and what to recycle. Because I'm thinking that it isn't just the fact that they're not doing their job, it's that they're looking at stuff and saying, oh, this stuff really shouldn't be recycled anyway. And they're starting to ditch it. And then they get complacent when they were. If we have everybody doing it completely right, then there is no link to stand up for them to say, well, look what we found in the trash. See, I'm saying they can, they can have that rebuttal back on, this isn't supposed to be recycled anyway. Because like I said, I get lost with it because of.
I assure you, that's not the case because I've seen they go around my whole neighborhood and they do the same thing, every single house. And then, and I see some neighbors, they put in styrofoam egg cartons and styrofoam. They'll pick that up and put that in recycling when they recycle too, which that's not supposed to go in there.
Right.
But they, I even recorded at one time, I didn't get the whole thing, but they went around my whole block because it's every single house. So it's not like, oh, you had the wrong stuff in there.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't, I don't think I ever put anything wrong in there. Like I said, I'm very careful if it's one or two, I put it in there. If I have any doubt, I won't put it in there.
Oh, I'm, you're wrong. I'm 100% sure you're going to do that the right way. But there are a lot of people that just don't know.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And I'm just saying, that's our first step is educating ourselves.
Hey, just keep on going.
The, you know, educating ourselves is the first. By far, I am not the one that wants to give an excuse to a garbage company, believe me, Rick. But I want to make sure that, that we get our ducks all the way around town the same way so that we can really attack them with the wrong.
Well, I agree. And I think once we, once we open the dialogue with the extension of the contract, we need to talk about their expectations, our expectations. And we need to, to do a, a campaign where we're reaching out and educating. And we want to talk about yard trash, recycling, garbage, and then just making sure people know the right, right avenues, the right numbers to call if their trash gets mixed, missed, or whatever. So we, we want to make sure we, we reiterate and re-educate, especially with all the new, new people in town. So that's, that's going to be on staff, but we, we need to start that engagement with, with Waste Management for the, you know, as we do the extension and just lay out those expectations.
I want to say thank you very much to the volunteers again, reiterate what the vice mayor said. And what the vice, I do want to make a comment. Waste Management was definitely failing. And then they had a clause for 18 months where you can replace them. And they also didn't come back and pick up your trash till the next cycle when they missed it. So there was a lot of things bad and there are a lot of things that were good with Advance. We hired them for a reason. He said it was a blessing that we have them and we have a contract like this. Now, you mentioned Ed that you can mitigate, you know, there's a lot of ways to stop them from giving us a lower level of service, which I kind of anticipate is going to happen because they're not going to get to renew this contract because of this clause, whoever, you know, decided to not pay attention to it, it's almost like a punishment for them, which I believe it's not our favor, but it's also going to lower the level of service that we're going to have to be watching for, you know.
Yeah, Mr. Parker's got to be a little harder.
Correct.
Yeah.
If that's possible, right way.
But yeah, but you know, I mean, the penalties are in there for poor performance. If we have to exercise those, then, then we will. I think it's still, in my opinion anyway, and I think for advisory group, it's still better to stick with this contract that we have now and then look for something better in two years when we start this process again and go out for bid.
And/or the same company, but with a better term.
Yeah.
Because if they haven't failed us yet, I don't want to punish them neither for what they've done.
Well, it sounds like recycling part has been a pretty big failure, so you don't want to lose that.
And I think we need, you know, an ex, uh, re-education for folks to know what they can recycle, what they can't. And you probably already talked about this. But at this point, given the financial concerns.
Correct.
You know, this is probably the most prudent and I'm certainly most appreciative of the work that the committee has done.
Okay, all right, go. Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm not finished. I didn't, I didn't get a chance.
You got one more here.
Again, my, my question is mainly towards the consultants. Over the time period, we've had this contract, what, what's the percentage of increase in cost? Because I know right now we're saying 50%, you know, 50%. What's the percentage of cost increase has it been? And then what do you expect it to be, you know, in two years from now as an estimate?
Yeah, those are good questions. And I just want to say, thanks for having us back to help you the second time. And, you know, I just want to, and I'm going to definitely directly answer your question. But I just want to acknowledge, I've been doing this work for 35 years. I've worked with solid waste advisory committees all over the country. Very refreshing to see the group you have that cares about, you know, your community and legitimately wants to make improvement. So I just want to echo that and also thanks Steve, your town manager. It's been great work with you guys. So, but one thing I wanted to say, to, to answer your question, what's driving up wildly the prices that communities are seeing all around the state? We've been in business for 34 years helping communities. I'm sorry, I'm a little congested here, getting over a cold. But number one is the cost of trucks. The cost of trucks from the point where we worked with you, we put out the RFP, we wrote the contract, we negotiated terms, worked with your staff back then. And the cost of trucks has doubled. The cost of metal, as you all know, if you're doing anything construction, is going up months from right now. So the first thing is going to be an increase in the cost of the equipment. And that in and of itself is a lot. Second, we all know insurance only goes one way, which is up. And thirdly, labor is harder and harder to find and drivers are harder and harder to find. We didn't have the Amazon nation when we did, started this work eight years ago or so.
Oh, yeah, wow, yeah.
How the amount, if you had a choice, would you rather drive a delivery truck, that's acquisition, than a nice Ford Sprinter or something? Or the big Sprinter, but, and a nice acquisition truck or a garbage truck? So the cost of labor is going up. So I just wanted to mention all those. It's hard to compare what you see around the state as increases because there's different factors that lovely service, definitions of communities when it was signed. We haven't seen anything less than 20% in two years and in some cases, unusually 50 to 100% they're going up. Now, that's often because the community has a really good deal. A number of you have brought up the, and I was very aware of the sentiment of the community towards Waste Management when we did the original work. In fact, I reminded the committee of that. It was fairly vocal and fairly clear. So I could, I could feel some of the, the tension about, oh, bring in those guys back who we wanted to put flamethrowers on their trucks. I mean, it was not a happy time in the town back then. So I want to acknowledge that. But where I was going is that the clause that's in your contract, and the committee knows this, we use that in other communities. And the only place that I know actually went forward and did that was Indian River County over on the east coast. And they voted to put in place that it's the exact same clause you have. And Waste resisted that, but working with the attorney's office, they realized they had no way out and they had no choice. So it's been, this clause has been used before. What I wanted to mention is liquidated damages has been mentioned as a tool, but the number one thing that the companies don't want is to be found in breach of a contract with a government. Because almost every government puts it out, have you ever been terminated or has there been a breach of a contract? And if the answer is yes, the review usually stops with procurement department, certainly in the larger counties. So you have liquidated damages, but they don't want to run into a problem. They want to provide the service. They're not going to be happy, but they sign this contract clause. So I just wanted to offer that. They have liquidated damages. And the, the last thing, as you mentioned, the mixing of recyclables. You know, the industry has, has been mentioned already, has changed. The good news is getting better again for the first time in three, four years, the value of the material. And I think as Steve mentioned that, and Ed mentioned it also, that could be enforced through education with the residents and more importantly, holding that to the terms of the contract. So we strongly support what the advisory community is doing. Bethany, who's here with me, has worked with, you know, Steve and the group seamlessly. So I want to make sure that I answered the question that you originally raised, but those are things I heard you talking about that I wanted to address. We'd be happy to answer anything else that you have.
You answered my question about the increase. The increase has been what over the, we, we estimate an increase to be 20 to 50% now. What do you think the estimate of the increase would be in the next two or three years or all those capital outlays and all the things that you mentioned now is already kind of baked in and won't be a significant increase in the next two or three years?
Well, I wish I could give you a definitive number on that, but I would say the cost of these services can get higher and higher. I think if you put this out to bid now, you'd be, if you got lucky, in the $20 range, below, you know, like at $20. Three, three years after that, I think it's only going to continue to go up because the cost of trucks, there's no reason to believe it's going down. And the difficulty of getting labor is increasing. So the cost of these services we're seeing going up, we just finished work down in North Miami Beach, their rate to the residents doubled, 100% increased. So there's a whole bunch of reasons why. And it was a Waste Management came and bid this six years ago and they bid a very low price. They found out they couldn't do the work and now they said, okay, to do the work, it's going to cost twice as much. So you see different numbers around the state, but to try and answer your question, if I was to get, give a guestimate, I would say a three years down the road, your price will be more in the, you know, low twenties, $23 a household, somewhere around there. Depends what happens with competition. These guys keep acquiring each other and merging and that, everything, it won't happen. Then new companies come in and help drive the price down, like anything else in a free enterprise system. So can't give you a great number, but I would take the, the frozen rate that you had from seven years ago and run so quickly with it that you should adjourn the meeting. Say, great idea, committee and Steve. But I'd say nobody's rate has stayed the same in any contract. We've probably worked on 25 collection procurements, either renewals or new RFPs in the last three years, and every one of them, the rate has gone up.
I guess we've got to do a good job of starting the talks now with the community and, and, you know, internally as far as getting in front of those costs. Because, you know, I know if we increase, you know, 50 to 75%, people need to know.
Well, and I totally agree. And, and one of the compromises might, you might end up with a, instead of four days a week, you know, four, four pickups a week, you might end up with three or something different to, to maybe mitigate a little bit of that, but it, it's a small amount. So you might end up with a lower service and much higher cost, so.
And I think, I think that was the strategy when we formed this committee was to figure out how to, to make it better and contain cost and what does recycling look like? And we found that probably the best thing to do was to wait because of the cost, you know, payment. And that is exactly what we're going to have to do next.
But I think the points he made are, you know, are, you know, are very interesting. You know, the cost of the trucks and the labor pool, you know, I mean, that's something we can't control. And, and you know, we got a great information officer that can really put that out there. You know, just, you know, just start dropping a little tidbit along with the, the recycling piece. Because I know, when I'm at different places, I see recycling, you know, it's strict in different places. And I'm not sure if that's going to affect the cost or not, but I think, you know, if we.
Yeah, I.
That recycling piece as well, would definitely go a long way.
I don't think we do the best, the best job at recycling.
So commissioner, besides preparing the citizens on how to manage the recycle and the trash, to start preparing them right now and then hopefully the committee or this, the board, these members continue helping us through this next year, three years.
Yeah.
Prepare the citizens so they don't get sticker shots, 75%.
Exactly.
Talking about 50 to 75%, it could be 100% years from. Talking about 50 to 75%, it could be 100% years from now.
Exactly, right.
Wait for, you know, the month of, but, right.
Yeah. Or prepare them for one day a week pickup.
Well, it might be something that you end up, a couple of different times over the course of the next year, workshop a lot of people to talk about. Because now is a good time to do it. Because now we got that success story for 10, for 10 years, nothing will have gone up. So it's, you know, now would be the time to, I guess, soften the blow, I guess, would be more.
I totally agree. So, you know, this can be kind of an incremental thing. We start off a little slow, but as we move closer to this contract end date and we reinvigorate the group and we have a couple of work sessions, it can all start to kind of get out there about the changes that are coming. You know, I think we need, the next time around, we need a little more lead time. I think we did good with this one, but we probably need to back this up another, you know, four or five months and have some public discussions so that, you know, we're like 18 months out from the contract end date.
Exactly.
And we're having these discussions so that when it, and when the RFP actually hits the streets, people are, everybody knows that that's happening.
Yeah, and that's where, that's where I'm going, you know. You know, picking up trash, I mean, we know, it's a necessity. It's not like, you know, we can't, we can do without it. We have to do it. And then you look around the country, you know, recycling and, you know, these, you know, eco-friendly trucks and all that stuff, you know, it comes with a cost. And so, you know, we can tell a story in a great way, which, you know, she does an excellent job on telling a story. Even though every year, as we talk about the budget, when you start putting the budget out and you still pick it up, you know, show a graph, what the budget looks like, why is it is? Why, you know, what it's going to look like in the years to come? And, and all the other stuff that we're doing, you know. Even with the sewer coming in, you know, all the stuff that we're doing. But, you know, you may have some extra costs because of these factors. I mean, I was blown away just to hearing that, what he just said, you know. And then you talk about Amazon, you know, the labor pool is this, you know. And then you're talking about trucking, everything's being moved by trucks, you know. Not everything, but a lot is being moved by trucks. So, you know, people, you know, going into the trucking business every day.
I think things are going to change in the next couple of years with recycling, you know.
Right, it is, yeah.
All of that. But I was in St. Augustine this weekend and restaurants are closing two days a week because they can't get help.
Right, 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 right.
So, you know, would rather drive an Amazon truck or a garbage truck?
Well, I was very thankful to have the knowledge that KCI has and Mitch and then the group that we had because they were very engaged. So I learned, I mean, I know a little bit about everything. And I've been through, you know, garbage five or six years ago with Lake County with solid waste. But I learned a lot over the last couple of months. So it was a very good exercise that we've gone through. So I'm very appreciative of that. We have, I believe we have Kessler's contract out for a couple of years so that we can reengage them when we need to. And like I said, we'll, we'll keep tabs on this group because it was a good group so that we can reengage them as we need to moving forward. And even as we go through this re-education stuff, we can engage with them to make sure that it makes sense. So.
Because, you know, I sometimes wonder, am I supposed to put this in here? I think I'm supposed to put this in here. I know how to read the triangles, but.
Yeah.
Amen. I know Earth Day just passed by and I don't know why I paid attention so much to Earth Day. A lot of shows around Earth Day and what you can, what you can't recycle. And I know I learned a lot just watching some of the shows in the last few days, you know, the size of stuff and putting the top on the container compared to not putting the top. So, you know, I know recycle, you know, is getting bigger and become a big focus now.
You know, the same way, you know how I showed you that Indian Harbor newsletter about the golf carts?
Yes.
The month before that, Indian Harbor sends out, and of course, they're bigger than us. But they do a newsletter, kind of like what we did, the paperback. And it was like, just like six pages folded. They had two full pages spread of it that was pictures of what you recycle, what you don't. You used to be able to recycle this, but you can't anymore like that. I mean, they laid it right out there and it was delivered as a present.
And you contaminate your bin with one thing and they, they take the whole thing.
It's awesome. But don't go nowhere. We highly appreciate you stopping by for the next three years.
My love, great.
Thanks, guest.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, those who are virtual with us.
You're welcome. There's one thing, Steve, I just wanted to mention that I did forget. When a few people were raising, you know, the cost going up, one of the council members did that, which is you have one distinct advantage that I think will keep you a little bit at the lower end. You're what we consider an industry to tuck in. Your town is of the size that they're working all around you. So it's not that big of a deal to come into your community. It's a standalone contract. I think in the future, that will keep you on the lower end of these increases we're seeing. I just wanted to mention that also. But that's, the good news is that's three, three and a half years down the road, so.
So John Schmidt was on the group also. He was up.
And Steve Stanton.
And Steve Stanton, yeah.
Hello.
Thank you.
One more question.
Oh, sorry.
How will recycle affect the cost at all?
I'll turn it over. But I think right now, with the way the industry is and there's no market for recycling, it is affecting the cost if you go out to bid. I believe that the, the cost of recycling has gone way up to get rid of it. But Mitch can.
When your contract started, the value of the mixed ton of recyclables in your area was about $130 a ton, maybe a little higher, $140 a ton. What I mean by that, when they process those recyclables through the facility that's called a MRF, a mature recovery facility, when they sold it out, it was about $140 a ton they were able to get for the material. Today, it's about $60. So that's why Steve's right, the cost is going up when they bid on these projects because they're factoring that in and they don't want to take the risk of what that is. Now, the good news is it's going up quickly. Last month it was 60, this month it's about 72. It's starting to move up as the economy is getting a little stronger.
So we may have some positives on recycling in a couple of years.
Yeah, that's one of the things I kind of learned this week, watching Earth Day, you know, infomercials and stuff, you know. So I, yeah, I saw, so I was wondering, you know.
But they used to, you know, make a certain amount of money on it. So that they did their contract and they're making a half to a third of what they were making before.
Because also, there's some areas, they lose it, so they got to pay. Depending on some of the low-grade recyclables, they have to even pay to get that shipped off. So there's a negative cost on some of those things that I saw.
Yes.
I don't know why I saw so much Earth Days.
Was it a slow week for you or something?
I was kind of tuned in, so it was kind of interesting, you know.
It's very interesting.
I was watching a show, there was one show that stated that like, plastic forks, because of the shape, you shouldn't recycle. For like a bottle with a tap or cap on, you take the cap off, the cap won't fit through the machine. But if you put it on a bottle, it'll fit through the machine. So it was just some quirky things.
And that's the kind of stuff that, I, you know, that, I don't know.
Right, exactly, right, yeah.
That's the stuff you get from Bill Nye the Science Guy.
I like Bill Nye the Science Guy.
And what I'm hoping, you know, my expectations is that Waste Management is going to be a partner in this and not, we're not going to be in conflict with them. I know I'm an optimist, but that's, that's my hope moving forward until we get through this contract.
I think that, I think that, you know, the world is changing, in this arena, the world is changing so fast that these companies are going to have to do that.
We will see.
So final thing, like I said, was on the regular agenda, on the consent, there's just a recommendation to move forward with the extension of the contract.
Keep the group together.
Yes.
Yes, we appreciate the work. The garbage, you know, who knew that I would find garbage and wastewater so interesting?
Exactly.
Who knew?
All right.
All right. So we can take a little more than a 15-minute break before we start our regular meeting. And any of you who, you know, want to drop off, please feel free. And welcome you to stay.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Stephanie. Steve and John.
John has to stay, he has a Wisconsin shirt on.
Wisconsin.
All right, we're done with this part.
You ready?
We're ready.
All right, I'm going to call this town meeting to order for the regular town meeting. Please stand for the pledge and invocation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Father, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask that you give us your wisdom and discernment and that you help us make decisions for the best of our town citizens. And we honor you in all we say this evening, in your glorious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Yoki. Please.
Commissioner Pollan.
Present.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Ms. Mary Sadekio.
Present.
Mayor Stark.
Here.
Out of the forum.
Ooh, and I think we're, we have changed our agenda.
Yeah, look at that.
Look at there.
What are we missed?
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have two presentations. And I think that's why we have a lot of people here virtually. So if you wish to speak at the appropriate time, you're going to have to raise your hand and we will unmute you. Okay, just to keep the noise down. So we're going to do teacher appreciation first. I know we have the principal in the room. So whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School teachers mold our future citizens through their guidance and education, and whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School teachers embrace students of widely different backgrounds and abilities, and whereas our society expects public education to provide quality education and services to all children, no matter what their backgrounds or abilities, and whereas our county's future depends in large measure upon the education of our youth, and whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School is proud of its commitment to teach charter education and promote public participation, whereas Oakland Avenue Charter School teachers and staff spend countless hours, which is really true, outside their classrooms, preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community services. And whereas the town of Oakland recognizes that its teachers and staff are providing exceptional education services to our children, now therefore I, Kathy Stark, mayor of the town of Oakland, proclaim the week of May 2nd to May 8th as Teacher Appreciation Week and May 5th as Teacher Appreciation Day in Oakland. I urge all citizens to pay tribute to our wonderful and dedicated teachers at the charter school. And I also want to thank Mike for all this hard, hard work over the years at the charter school. So, are we doing pictures?
Yep. One of my groups in front of the screen. Yeah, with the teachers. Yeah. If you can get them. Teachers, if you want to turn on your cameras, we're going to have a virtual photo shoot.
Everybody smile up there.
And if you don't mind staying on for five more minutes for the officers' proclamation, it'd be nice to celebrate that as well. There you go. Do you want to squeeze in between? Is that what we're talking like this?
I'm going to come in the middle here. No, maybe not. Okay. Yeah, I think that's.
Is that what we're supposed to be doing this whole thing?
Okay.
Maybe the other way. Yeah.
Mayor, do you want to go more center? You can stand right there.
Can I?
Yes.
Oh, I won't.
Yeah, no, you're good, it's high. Up your perits. Okay. All right, ready? One, two, three, and do a few. Couple more. Okay, smile.
You don't have to, we have masks.
With your eyes. Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we have another good one. This is a proclamation for Town of Oakland Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Oakland Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens in Oakland, whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property and by protecting them against violent war disorder and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation. Whereas the men in Oakland, of the Oakland Police Department, unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore I, Kathy Stark, call upon all citizens of Oakland to observe the week of May 9th through May 15th as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. We also could not be more proud of our police department and the community policing that we provide in this town. I think that that makes such a difference to how we feel about our neighbors and how we're protected here.
Picture again?
Yes.
Do you want to stand?
Sure. Yep, I know you are.
I get to stand next to you.
All right, one, two, three. One more. Very good, thank you.
By the way, the proclamations, Steve switched up. Doing very well. You on your own?
Yes, we are.
I'm fully vaccinated.
Yep, got both my rabies shots.
That was no fun, let me tell you. All right, we are now to public forum. If there's anybody here who wishes to discuss something that is not already on the agenda, this is now your opportunity to let us know what you're thinking. We ask that you keep your comments free. Do we have anybody here? Do we have anybody virtually? Please raise your hand. Oh, I do have one here. Oh, okay.
I signed in, there was somebody ahead of me, but can I go in?
Sure, sure.
John Ragsdale, I live at 12 Winter's Landing and I'm on our HOA board and a couple of us are here to petition for some of our residents. And our issues involve signage. The school pickup and drop-off, and it was always going to be a problem. On Incheon Avenue, East Incheon Avenue and East Gully, I think Mike put signs up that give the information, no parking, 8 a.m. 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The sign looks like that. I don't know if you can see it from there.
Yeah.
The residents on those two streets say these signs really don't prevent the pickup and the drop off. So my suggestion, I don't know if it'll help, but on all the stop signs in the neighborhood, this sign, which says no school drop off or pickup is posted. But that's on the stop signs at each end of these streets. My question would be, would it be worthwhile or feasible to put that type of sign in, or on those two streets that looks like, uh, in the same spot where this, uh, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM sign is. Halfway down each street, there's one of these on either side of the street. And the residents say that people don't.
Can you pass that? Can you pass that?
Oh, yes, sir.
Commission board?
And there is no sign at all where the school sidewalk comes down to Mackey. So it needs a sign, whatever, um, the commission decides would work there. One more sign issue.
Thank you.
Between 4:15 and 5:01 Mackey, there is a bump out on Mackey. And the residents use that for parking during the day. And there's been a case where a car was parked there for a couple of weeks. And our police department identified it as a car that came from. When it got here, the license was expired. And it was kind of making the neighbors nervous about having the car there. And, uh, Lieutenant Angela knocked on a door next to where the car was parked. And it was determined that the driver was waiting to get a license for the car. And everybody knows that if you're getting a license now, it's a two-week delay to get into the building to get your paperwork squared away. And that day, that very day, he got his license and moved the car. But the neighbors were wondering if it would be possible to put a no overnight parking sign in that area. The, uh, there is one home that tends to leave one or two vans overnight, maybe more than one night, in the parking area. And, uh, they would like to keep it as a parking area to use during the day, but not have to overnight park. But that is all the signage problems or Winter's Landing HOA. Any questions about that?
I don't know if we got your name. Can you give?
John.
John.
Ragsdale.
Signed in on the thing.
Mr. Ragsdale, can I hold on to these?
Oh, yes, sir.
Um, I'll go ahead and address this. So, um, we'll look into this. Um, we'll look into this as far as the inability to enforce it and be able to put these up. School's almost to an end for this year in May, but by the time we get to August, we'll come up with something to, uh, to be able to address this. Uh, we are looking at the entire area as far as signage and speed limit signs and stuff. We're doing an inventory right now, so as part of that process, we'll look at this and see what we can do about the, uh, the no school drop off, um, and put new signs up. Um, as far as the, uh, the bump out, um, Mike and I have talked about this. I think you had talked to Mike previously about it. Uh, we will look into whether we can do parking, no parking signs and have it enforced, um, through an ordinance. Uh, we have talked about some, some of the ways that the fines happen. We don't really have a process for that. But we'll look into that a little further. Or the other opportunity could be that we just take that bump out completely. If it's not gonna be a connector to Oakland Park, it is town property. Make it an attractive place for people to park. There is going to be connected to Oakland Park and will be a, a road probably within the next 12 months. But the one, the one that's been identified in the middle, um, isn't really serving any purpose other than as an attraction for parking. And so we, maybe we just need to look at the bigger picture of actually taking it out. But if not, we'll, we'll work on getting some signage in there and making sure there's something that we can enforce. So I'll, if you're all right, I'll take these and we'll look into what we can do over the summer so we can address this before school starts.
As I said, the neighbors around that bump out, they like having it there for a quick place to park. If they're gonna duck in and duck out, but the overnight is where the problem is.
Just takes one person.
Well, and we need to look at how that green space interacts with Oakland Park as they're working on Phase 7. But, um, if there's no real need for that bump out to be there, I guess it was set up originally because it was gonna be a connect.
Yeah, we're preserving the grid.
But, um, if not, we can just turn it into green space and just extend that curb. And then it's, it doesn't become that attractive place for people to park. So, um, one way or the other, we'll, we'll come up with a solution so that we can, um, resolve that.
And the principal, I believe, has a comment.
I just want to say that as the principal of the school, I'm, I'm personally very sympathetic to the plight of the neighbor in regards to our school traffic and my staff is as well, so we apologize. Um, we do actually have it in our parent contract that parents are supposed to follow the, um, traffic pattern without exception and that they can be asked to be, um, leave the schools. We've gone out many times and tried to reinforce that. Um, and so we, uh, we don't take it lightly. And in fact, what, regardless of different, if I know who it is, I actually go looking for them to tell them that that's not it. And so, um, we do care and so apologize. Um, one of the things that wouldn't mind bringing back to your HOA members that on occasion, there has been individuals that have gained permission from neighbors in that neighborhood to park by their house. So it creates a little bit of a loophole in regards to things. So that's sometimes some of the things that we've tried to overcome.
Well, I appreciate that and I know this has to be ahead of it. And I'm hoping the scaffolding rolls gets developed and maybe the traffic flow can be adjusted. Like, this evening makes it easier for everybody coming in and out of school besides, uh, the, uh.
Those that are coming, those that are coming your way are just looking to avoid the traffic.
Well, thank you very much and thank you all for hearing this. And I want to say one thing, that this gentleman here, Mike, is very helpful. For anytime, anytime we have something come up or problem in the signs, I can discuss things with him. He keeps us informed and we appreciate that. So, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
And thank you all.
Hikey.
Mike, give him his money back now.
Thank you, Mr. Continuality.
I'll give him, he's gonna give me the money later.
Now, do we have anybody else who wishes? Who wishes to speak at public forum? On something that's already on the agenda? Oh, okay.
I could give you one more item if you want a headache.
Okay.
I'll do that real quick, John. I can, it won't take but a minute.
Oh, time's up.
And that is, the state passed the, uh, the state statutes, what an entity can do as far as tree cutting. And what they can do as far as can or cannot cut it, you have to replace it and that kind of thing. They list the rules in it. We've had neighbors come to the board and say, what can we do with our trees? And we usually send them to town after they look at our HOA statutes or rules. And it seems really confused. Some folks think if the builders put the trees on your lot, you can do what you want to do with them. If it's a town tree, you better talk to the town before you do anything. And it's, doesn't seem like there is a correct answer. And I've read the, uh, pages in our website. And I'm not sure that really addresses that exact problem as far as removing trees from the neighborhood. Because people say they, they check with the town and they get told it's okay to do whatever you want to do. So, along the line, can we have a, something in writing for people to use?
Um, as far as HOA rules, I don't know if they trump and our town attorney's on. If you have a rule as far as trees within your HOA, yeah, that's one issue. But within the, uh, the town and places that aren't within the HOA, if you have a tree that you want to take down and you have an arborist that comes out and says that tree is a danger to your, your building or for whatever reason, you know, it's, it's rotted and it's a danger. And by state statute, you can take that down.
Got it. Okay, that was one and it's.
But, but the, the HOA may have a little more teeth than we do because we're having to follow the statute. I'm not sure how it applies to an HOA.
Well done.
This is Becky. Can I address that?
That's our town attorney.
Yes, we can hear you, Becky. Go ahead.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, the regulations with the HOA and the regulation of the, that the, the town has are both enforceable. Um, the Florida legislature in their wisdom took away a lot of the powers of the town. But they did not take any of the HOA's powers away. And the HOA still, um, assuming that your HOA documents say that you need to have permission to take a tree down, those continue to remain in force even though the town's ability to enforce, um, the town's regulations have been greatly curtailed. So the bottom line is, um, in order to take a tree down, you've got to satisfy the HOA requirements and you also have to satisfy the town requirements. I hope that helps a little bit.
That's very helpful and that, that'll work. The problem with the neighborhood aging, some trees are destroying sidewalks and mainly driveways. And it could be a danger if the driveway is raising up four, five or six inches and somebody trips and falls. But the arborist, to me, the key to it, if they say it's okay, then, um, it's gonna be okay with the HOA. But we want to make sure that we're not violating any town rules because we all want trees.
It's the same way with the town at this point with, as long as they have an arborist. Um, now that's on residential properties. If it's a commercial property, it's, it's gonna be different. But, um, as long as they have an arborist that says it's a danger, then, then there's not, there's nothing that the town's gonna do to.
Thank you for that answer. It clarifies a lot of things. Thank you. And thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you. Nice to see people in the audience. Um, so, uh, moving on, unless we have anybody else who wishes to speak, um, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to pull out, have questions about, or do I have a motion?
I just, I have just a question probably for half the artist agreement. You're all in sync with that?
Yeah, she did a great job. I was gonna mention she did a great job on that and the timeline as well as far as, you know, keeping us busy over there. So. And then also just want to add, you know, if anybody have any ideas, you know, please don't hesitate to reach out to let, um, let them know, you know, some ideas. So.
I will be reaching out to you for the ideas you put there for the month of Hispanic month.
Mm-hmm.
So I have some ideas to bring to you.
Yeah, I saw that. I thought about it. I was like, man, I saw, I reached out and said, let's add that in.
You guys did.
Asked her, you know, to reach out to you on that. And I was like, yeah, that's something that we definitely need to do. And it's, you know, it's getting a lot, you know, coming more and more in the forefront over the last few years. I was like, I don't know how we missed that, but we, we did miss it. So, but I want to make sure that we.
Thank you.
And I talked to the two gentlemen who are here frequently painting. They're from Disney WDI retirees. And I know that we're gonna be doing something with them also.
Yeah, we're ready to bring them in as the agreement is approved by the commission.
Yep. Cool. All right, that was Mike. I think I'm good. I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been seconded. Moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments from those in the audience here in the building? Do we have anybody virtually who has any questions or comments? Please raise your hand. Okay, all on paper? Okay, other policy matters, Spear Park Tennis Court.
Okay, um, I'll, Mike's gonna go through the, the site plan real quick. So we, um, the tennis courts are in, the fences are up, they've been painted. They've, they've still been closed because we're waiting for the, the paint to cure. Um, they are ready to be unlocked and opened up. The last thing that needs to go is the benches. I know I've gotten some very positive feedback on the fences as they stand. Uh, but one of the, when the discussion was, when we had the discussion about a month ago, uh, one of the things that was brought up was to maybe soften the fencing with some landscaping. And Mike was already looking at a landscape, doing some landscaping there. But we had a, a landscape architect, uh, put together a plan and then make some suggestions on the type of plants. And I'll let Mike go through that part of it.
So, um, good evening. How is everyone? Um, we had, uh, it wasn't the last meeting, but the meeting prior, we had a lot of comments about, um, the tennis court and the pickleball court. Uh, so we addressed, we have this plan in place for landscaping, but we put it to paper, just make it easier to understand. Um, this is not for construction. This is a, uh, proposed plan. Um, basically it shows groupings of native plants around the tennis court area and pickleball area. It's not too much. Uh, it may be too little for some. I'm just looking for direction from the commission on, uh, you know, possibly what level, um, that we should put in. Uh, this is our preferred staff recommendation. The, uh, we have some, uh, pretty pictures, Elise. Yeah. Of some Florida natives. The beauty berry, which, yeah, the beauty berry, which is probably one of my favorites.
Yes.
Is a, is a Florida native, black eyed Susan. These are all perennials. So we won't have to go back and replant or anything like that. We just need to do limited maintenance. Um, you know, these are shrubbery and, and flowers, if you will. Uh, this is just some of the, uh, some of the plant material that we could put up there. So. Really grassy. All those are Florida natives.
I didn't realize that black eyed Susan was a Florida native. Black eyed Susan, I didn't realize that was a Florida native. I like that.
Yeah, I just got some of that when they did their plant sale over at Nature Preserve. Yeah, they did some native plants and I got.
Oh, too. Cool.
Yes.
So anyway, um, that was one of the comments that came up was the, um, landscaping. Uh, if you feel this is tasteful, then we'll proceed. Um, and then the other thing that caught my attention was the fencing. There was, uh, uh, talk about the fencing being overwhelming and you couldn't see through it and that. So I think, uh, I think we're looking for direction on that. Um, I do have some costs if we replace or we do something else with that. It's going to be $5,000 to $10,000. We, we built it according to specifications. And that's, this is just the way tennis and pickleball courts are built. It's, it's a community park. It's for everybody in the community. Um, and that's just my position.
Comments from the table?
I'm sorry, I, that was the one that said we certainly would take a relook at it and we would want to.
Oops.
I hate masks.
Me too.
On record, let me say it again. I hate masks. Um, that we relook at it and we want to make sure that we get a kind of a cross section of the town to see what, as a whole, the town thought, not just those of us that live right along the park. Um, I, I get a lot of good comments about the thing from, you know, folks besides, you know, us that live on the border of it, which is, it's hard, it's a lot harder when you live on the border of it. I get that. But we got to look at what the whole town looks at. My personal opinion of it is that the majority of the town, the people I have talked to seem to like it the way it is. So, and I would be interested in seeing if anyone else had asked other, you know, folks in town about it, where we're at with it.
I am, I solicited opinions and there, there was nothing negative. And I, I just don't know that we want to spend $5,000 or $10,000 to, you know, make it look different when we, you know, we're planting the plants. And I think that'll soften it up a bit.
I, I think that some of the opinions I got too was that it was fine the way it was. Some of them liked the fact that you could lower it. Some of them liked the fact that you could lower it. But using 10 to $15,000 that we can use somewhere else, maybe enhance another park or add to, uh, other part of the park, I think would be money spent wisely. So, um, I'm okay the way it is.
I, um, I don't, it kind of black fence blends in. You can see all the way through the park. If you were to lower it, you still got the long fence and then you have more balls going out of the court. So I, I agree. I think maybe keeping the fence the way it is and I do like these plants. And I do like the idea that these are smaller plants. I don't, I wouldn't want to see real tall landscaping because then I will be looking at a wall. I like to be on the sea all the way through and see the whole park we have in right now.
And we looked at that for security issues as well, so.
And I, uh, go ahead, Judge.
Same feedback as well. I even took some pictures and, and shared it and, you know, I got the same feedback as well. Don't want to be redundant, but I got the same feedback.
You're not being redundant. And, um, I just, you know, it, I, it, it just seems like it, it looks, you know, you can see through it. It looks fine. And then as we move forward, we'll just make sure that we know a little more, you know, it was just one of those things where it.
Well, I think Steve laid it out pretty well as far as the public, uh, you know, notification, you know, we had all of that.
Yeah.
Just a lot of people don't really watch that, watch for that until, until the bulldozers start.
Comes out of the ground.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I do understand that we have to be a little more specific. Something that we think is, is pretty routine may not be for everybody. So, we, we are going to need to take care to be as specific as we can when we can, so.
And I'm anxious to, um, when you have a date, to get the date, to get those open.
To take one, I'm sorry.
To open them up?
To open them up.
That's the next thing. We can, we can unlock them tomorrow.
We, we've had a.
I think you need to have fireworks like on the Facebook.
We've, we've had a lot of calls in the public works and into, uh, uh, and over there.
We, we did have to wait because of the paint. We wanted to see if the paint cured, but it, it, we were essentially, we're there. So we can, again, we can unlock those tomorrow morning.
That would be fabulous. And like I said, fireworks on the Facebook page. I think we're going to run into some discussion down the road about how the pickleball courts get used because I think they're going to be extremely popular.
Yeah, like, like I said, we've had a lot of calls and just today, somebody mentioned to me, it's, you know, we have one pickleball court. We have plans if it becomes necessary to strike the tennis court. So we'll have two more pickleball courts that we may need to be striking sooner than later.
So what, what does that mean? You can use it for either?
You can, you can do it two ways. You can, you can set it up with both sides and have two temporary nets that you can put up for pickleball. Or you can take the existing tennis court net and have an interior striping, maybe an orange or an opposite color that you could have one pickleball court using the tennis net, or you can do two pickleball courts, but you have to have, uh, temporary nets for those.
I think it's just going to be popular.
We also, as we measured it out, we did make sure we left enough space so we wouldn't impact any trees, that there could be an actual second pickleball court installed. If that's the desire of the community and the commission. We're not proposing that at this point, but we did make sure we left enough room for a second one. And should we need to put some kind of rules in place, um, we're prepared to come back and do that at some point if we need to.
And I'm, I, you know, and I am of the opinion and it's, you know, it is the community's input that we don't want to get too much stuff in there.
I, I totally agree. I totally agree. I just, we just, as we were doing it, we just kept that in mind, but it, nothing, nothing on the plan that says we're going to do that. We just made sure that there was enough room. It could be 10 years from now, somebody might want to put on another pickleball court on it just.
And yesterday we put up signage that has, uh, you know, rules that are, uh, typical of, of those sports. And, uh, you know, they're right there on the gates. They're easy to see.
And no skateboards.
No skateboards.
No skateboard.
There are benches already?
We have benches on order. Uh, we expect them any day. So as soon as they come in, we're going to install them. Um, I would like to add one thing, uh, on the, if you could go back to the site plan, Elise, uh, just a quick question or clarification. Uh, you see where the sidewalk, uh, is north of the like skating rink thing, kind of east of the tennis court. We, uh, we planned to have that sidewalk connect to the parking area. And I just wanted to throw that out there. It shows it stopping there. But it, it will connect to the parking area where the handicap and.
Okay.
That is in the near future. So I just want to bring that to your attention, so.
Well, and I, I don't think any of those are handicapped, but we could make at least one of them handicap once we, the handicaps are over closer to Vice Mayor's house.
Where?
Over on the other side, near the Vice Mayor's house and the playground. That's where the two handicap parking.
Oh, that's right. You're right.
So those are not at this point, but we could make one of those handicap if we get it properly connected for.
And we're not, we're not planning on adding any more skate parties.
No, no ma'am. In fact, we could take one of those away with the handicap spot.
Will you be connecting it to the existing pay bring and the new location of the monument?
Yes, yes. There'll be a, there'll be a connection basically on the northern side of that, just so that people can access that. That's planned for this year if we have enough funding for it. If not, we'll plug it into the budget for next year.
And that is Bob.
Yes. Montgomery, former mayor.
Aww.
Yeah, we're going to put them right in the center of the, the little ring there.
Yeah, I just talked to his wife again on Friday, just to make sure she was fine with us moving his monument and she's 100% fine.
Uh, one other note while we're talking about Spear Park. So I did send out an email. We were anticipating starting the playground on Monday. It'd probably be a couple of weeks out from Monday. Uh, we do, as we were talking through staff, we've got a couple of rentals that we need to accommodate. But we will be starting the playground sometime during the month of May. It won't be next week, but when we do start, we'll make sure we get plenty of notice out.
Can we put pictures up?
Of the construction and.
No, pictures of what it's going to look like.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, well, I think that went out in the newsletter back in January, but we can, we can.
It'd be kind of cool to have it posted up there.
Yeah, so people can see that it's not going to be purple and yellow and.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that.
We're, we're targeting the 17th, which is a Monday to begin, uh, and it does include the swing sets as well.
That's awesome. I do have, uh, this isn't, it's a, it's a question that's, it's not off the subject, but are firecracker plants natives?
Are what?
Firecracker plants natives?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Firecracker, are firecracker plants native?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know.
That'd be a Jennifer question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if they are.
I think they might be.
I think they are. If they are, can we put them on the list?
Oh, yeah, sure. This, this is merely a suggested list.
I love, no, I love these. I love these, but I also very much like firecracker plants. And if they're natives.
They are. Yeah, I brought up, I brought.
Said they are.
Okay, cool.
Good job.
I brought up, I brought up coontie plants and they, there are certain parts of the plant that is, that'll make dogs sick. So we elected not to put those.
But if they're safe and, you know, let's put them on the list if they're natives.
Sure.
And they're hardy. They, they really do, you know, grow well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Scotty.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, now we're up to redundant well update. Is this one of my favorite engineers here?
Yes, it is.
All right.
What, what do you mean? What do you mean, one of my favorites?
No, I said my, I said my favorite engineer.
I heard one, two.
No.
Mike, I heard one, two.
I did not say that.
Okay, so this is, uh, basically it's a, just another update. I think you last heard about this. Uh, once we had purchased the property, that was our last update, I believe. Um, so anyway, let me just briefly go through this. The town currently operates two drinking water wells. And I'm, I'm going through this for the good of the public. I think you all know all of this, but.
That's okay. Go ahead.
The one in Spear Park produces about 1,000 gallons of water a minute. And the other one on Arrington Street over here in Vander Lake Park produces about 1,500 and 50. While that may seem like a huge amount of water, just keep in mind that, uh, on irrigation nights, we have over, we have up to and sometimes over 2,000 gallons a minute going out for irrigation. So it's, there's a big demand. So lucky for us, the irrigation demand is only for a few hours. So it gives it time to catch up. Uh, with all that aside, Florida administrative code, uh, section 62, 555, uh, states that, um, any public utility needs to have a, a backup or redundant well for their largest producer, uh, which in this case is Vander Lake. So, um, that's so the water demands can still be met even if the largest producer's out of service. Uh, several years ago, the town's leaders recognized that as the steady increase in growth of the system occurred, an additional well or water source would be needed. And I might just throw in here just for a second. In the consent agenda, you had the Oakland Park infrastructure. Just look at how many water meters were taken in because of Oakland Park. So it is growing. In November 2019, property was identified and acquired adjacent to the existing water treatment plant where another water well could be drilled. Um, the chosen location had several benefits, um, but we had, uh, specific setbacks that we had to meet. For the, for the DEP permit that's required. It's difficult when you, when you have some, everything's built up in here to find a well site. That was about the only one. I think we had one other, um, option. Anyway, so the proposed new well, uh, has a stepped casing, uh, which ranges from 12 to 18 inches in diameter and proposed depth of 450 feet. You know, I think the good thing about it is it's right next to the water treatment plant. It's right next to the ground storage tank. It can share the electrical and communication equipment and that. So it's a, it's a no brainer. Uh, additionally, this has an estimated cost right now of 950,000. So CPH, uh, one of the town's longtime consulting engineers has worked closely with staff in getting us, um, you know, to this point. Their expertise in various areas of utilities development is well documented and proven. Therefore, staff, therefore staff is confident that we have the right team at the right time working for us. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll answer them.
How deep is the well?
805.
That one's 805. This will be 450?
Yeah, there, I'll give you a little more history. When this well was drilled, it was originally drilled at about 450, 500 feet, I believe. I wasn't here, but that was 19 years ago. And, uh.
That long?
Yeah, 1,002.
Holy moly.
Yeah, so they elected at a later date to deepen it, uh, which took them into a lower, uh, level, which has a lower water quality. So it's kind of a risky move. Um, we don't know why that was done, but that's what we have. But it's 805 feet.
I don't either. Do you? My favorite engineer.
You guys were getting like some sand up on it. So they were trying to isolate that zone and they had a, they had a case pass it.
Okay.
They clearly case passed it.
So if we do.
So is that whole idea? So you won't be drawn from the same source you're like.
Neither of, once this one's drilled, neither of those operate at the same time. They're gonna, that, that is true, as you said, but they're not going to operate at the same time. If, if the big producer is out of service, there's no way that the, uh, Spear Park well could keep up. But the other one will, so they, they just don't operate at the same time.
So is it not going to look like the one we have now? Is it going to look like this?
Well, the, possibly. The, right now, we're at the preliminary design. The one that we have now is situated inside the building. That one's never going to be deepened. Nothing's going to be done with it. So we were able to build a building around it. That well, uh, when it is, uh, drilled, we're going to explore the lower Floridian, which is about 650 feet. Yeah, we're going to explore that as a future source so that if we ever have to, um, you know, uh, if we have a higher water demand or render regulations from the, um, St. John's as far as withdrawals, that we could withdraw from that lower, uh, Floridian, which we are kind of doing now, but there'll be space a little further apart. So we really don't know what the quality is. Um, and then once, once we know what our water quality is, we'll drop that closed and then operate the well at 450.
And that's not really the point of my question is those of us who were here, and that was most of us, were here when we were putting in those wells over there and the tank, the storage tank. We were very focused on making sure that it was aesthetically pleasing. So this is not aesthetically pleasing.
Do, do we want to let them go through the presentation and then we?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were, I thought you were finished. I thought, I thought you were done.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's go. And then we can talk a little bit about the, the aspect.
I'm sorry.
So we're good. Thank you, Mike. And permission, thank you for, uh, coming here today. Like Mike said, we just wanted to kind of give you a break. Where we're at with the project. Um, a few months ago, we were here presenting on the master plan and you may recall, and and one of the projects that were listed was the redundant well. As Mike says, the rules, uh, state that you should have a, uh, enough, uh, at least two wells for backup. The well at Spear Park was, uh, it's a smaller well. Um, so technically you meet that rule. Um, but as Mike had indicated, if you lose that big well, you won't be able to keep up with it, even at today's projected, you know, or actual flow. So the redundant well was a good planning, uh, thought. It probably started being thought about several years ago at least. Um, so when the property came, uh, open, that was a good idea to get that. It's closed. That picture, no, is not what it's going to look like. Uh, we can do some screening as I, I was here when we did all that. I didn't know. And we looked at a lot of sites before we ever made sure that we were able to come back.
That was a painful project.
It was a very painful. So we had seven other well site or proper sites. But all of them cost way more than to keep it right here. Um, so that, so anyways, we're here to go ahead, give you an update of, you know, where we're at. There are some ideas that we could do with that well, uh, for screening and, um, that was well, Robbie will go through it in the picture, was a, a, just an idea of what, what the, what needs to be put in. If that wellhouse wasn't around that well, it looked very much like that. Plus, we're going to paint it and we'll make some screen. So with that, we thank you all for giving us an opportunity. Robbie will go through our PowerPoint, give you some idea of where, where we're at now and where we're going.
Thank you, Scott. My name is Robbie Gonzalez, CPH engineers. So, um, I'm the project engineer for this, the, for this redundant well. As Scotty was pointing out for y'all. So I'm going to just go over just about seven quick slides here. So we'll, we'll run through the, um, the components of the design process. What we got, I worked with, uh, my assistant, Victoria Mer- 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 Marichokovich. So she, she's my, uh, assistant engineer that helped me. Uh, I have a, also an aerial for y'all to pass around right here. So it'll show you kind of where the location of the proposed well is. So you'll see that when we got that. So basically what I'm going to run through for y'all is just a project summary, where we're at, you know, project description, proposed well location, you know, well discharge head, that's what Adam Mayer right here was concerned with right there. Run through that. We'll also have the cost and just kind of a tentative, uh, project schedule that we have. So as, as you know, first item, is the project description is it's a proposed well. It's become a redundant well to, uh, to your, our Arrington well right, right here. It's located right on the plant site location. So the components of the well, redundant, uh, redundant well construction is, you know, first, we're going to have a drill rig that's going to come out here. They're going to put in a, a hole in the ground and they're going to test that and see what kind of capacity and what kind of water quality that you pull out of the ground. That'll sometimes, you know. That'll sometimes, you know, dictate what size pump that you put on, what size pipes that you have. And then we equip the top, once we complete the testing on the wells and know what, what production you can get from it, then you will equip it. For that photo that you saw, that was just an example. That one wasn't painted yet that you also saw. And we would equip it probably with a motor, a seventy-five horsepower motor and an eighteen hundred gallons a minute vertical turbine pump right there. And then you would connect it to the raw water main and also add a, a bypass line. Look at this. I know it's hard to real, really see right here. That's why I gave you the aerial right over here, just to show you. What you'll see on here, on this drawing is you'll see the little red circle. So there's sanitary hazards that you have to avoid. So you, the city, I mean, the town had purchased that adjacent property right there between the two properties. There's also a right away that's gonna be abandoned and encompassed into your, into the whole property right there. And we're trying to maximize the potential for that additional property over here. So we put the well up here in the north, in the northwest corner of the property and it would come straight across right about where your sidewalk is. And, cause we don't want to dive down into that stormwater pond right there. And then it'd come along right along the sidewalk and then it'd connect at the south side of the, of the existing ground storage tank. That's what the blue line is that you see right there. I was actually walking by there earlier and I saw your sidewalk. There's these two huge junipers that are right kind of in the way of the sidewalk. And so we do have, you know, abandoning and demolishing a portion of the sidewalk. I would suggest that we most likely reroute that a little bit away from there. So if somebody's going down their bicycle, if somebody's jogging down that, you're not getting slapped by that tree. So that part would get actually shifted over a little bit right there, but we don't show that. We just show just a portion of the sidewalk band. So I think that we would actually put some notes in there that we coordinate with town, how to, how to, um, how to get around there and actually have better use of that path right there. So it's not jammed anybody there. Then we also put this bypass in here that wasn't in the original construction. That gives us the town the ability to take the ground storage tank. Every five years, you gotta inspect it, the ground storage tank. I believe you all use a probably robotics. Yeah, or scuba diver that you send in there.
That's hilarious.
Yeah. So this gives you the opportunity, if you want to take that whole tank down, that, that's why that, that other blue line right there between the high service pump and the, and the ground storage tank is there. So that's just showing the proposed well. All right, next page. This is a well discharge, wellhead discharge assembly. So these are typical design items that you usually will have in a, in a well that DEP requires you to have. You know, you gotta have a flow meter up there. They want a, an air release valve. So all those little components are all there. So, and there's a, there's a check valve and isolation valve. So there's all kinds of things right there. There's ways to shorten that, that capacity if you want to, you know, you could go with a different style of check valve. You could go with, with a, with a vault, you know, for your meters, but those tend to take up the price of, of the project as well. That can shorten it, but then that, that usually brings an added cost. So typically that's about a twenty by twenty area that we're showing right there. It has the ability for you to actually pull a vehicle in there, you know, a truck that would have a crane and you could lift the motor off the top or whatnot. We had the discussion of possibly of having a building there, but as Mike was pointing out earlier, if, if this well gets converted to a lower Floridian offer well, if you got a building there, you gotta put a giant drill rig again over the top of that. So instead, what we had envisioned was it was going to be more of a, a fence that goes around it and you would have privacy slats. That's where we're at right now with the design. This right here is like a twenty-five hundred gallon per minute well up in Lake Mary. It's actually in the, in the parking lot of a, of a school right now. And, you know, the concrete pads got all that industrial look as you see right there, but it has the typical components right there. And you gotta have certain lay lengths when you have certain equipment. And that's why they go that far right there. So that's what I was just wanting to show you, cause I, I knew that people would want to know, well, what's it kind of, kind of look like? And actually the color on that, they, they, this is before they even painted it. Typically what they'll do on the raw water line is they have colors. I believe it's olive colors, what you do on wells, on raw water lines. So that whole line would be painted in olive type color right there. And you would actually have that all painted. And then you could have plants and, and out on the outside of there. Okay?
Hello, Robbie.
Yes.
Just, just for the short term, I'd like to add the water well down at Spear Park. That's, it's very similar to what we proposed there. So that's, you know, if you can envision that, that's what we have envisioned for the first phase.
Correct. So as, as Mike had pointed out, I mean, the total cost that we're looking at right now is about nine hundred thousand dollars. The actual construction cost is about eight hundred right now that we're, that we're projecting, the engineer's estimate of cost. So you'll see that the subtotal and the fifteen percent contingency that we have in, in there. That's what you're looking at, the construction cost. Right now, the town has already authorized the, the engineering survey permitting, bidding and the technical assistance. So all those items right there are already in, in play right now as we're, as we're moving forward on this design. So tentative schedule, what we look at, it's about eighteen months. You know, what it's gonna do is, is we got the permitting is what we're working on right now. So it's looking at a letter modification because since it's a redundant well and you're not gonna be operating it well at the same time, it's just a letter modification that we bring into the, into St. John's River Water Management District. So that'll go by June and then by July, we will have a set of fitable plans and specs. And then for the next fiscal year, you'd be able to start to go out to bid and get the well constructed over the next few months. So this is just our tentative schedule where we're at. And with that, it will take any questions y'all have.
So is this impact fee money? Impact fee money?
What, what we're using right now for the engineering and stuff, I believe we did an impact fees. We'll need to look at what we can use as far as impact fees next year. Mike and I will be sitting down and talking about the budget for next year. So, and this also may be something that could be partially funded under the American Rescue Plan. That money was called in there because they did talk about water and wastewater infrastructure. I don't have any final information on that yet, but that could be a portion of this and impact fees and then funds from the utility fund. So maybe a combination of funding to, to do this, to move forward with this, but that's one of the things we'll talk about as far as the budget process and, and the budgets. But we did go ahead, fund this year through impact fees to get this, get this started and get the, get the engineering.
And I would like for it to be, you know, fairly aesthetically pleasing, whatever that means.
We, Mike recently planted, you know, redone the, the landscaping around the one at Spear Park. And I, I would envision us doing something with a kind of a natural buffer. I would, I would prefer to have it housed, but based on the, the idea that you need to have some flexibility in the future, that's probably not the best idea. But we certainly want to make it as aesthetically pleasing. And I think where they've sighted it, but I hadn't seen the final site idea, which you're getting it this far away. There's really only one neighbor to the west of that property. So you're really kind of moving it away from the one neighbor. And so you've got the trail, the park, the road, and then the one neighbor on the one side. So I think where they've sighted it is, is really the best place on that site. So you can see where the, the neighbor is here. It's as far away from that neighbor as you can get, still meeting their standards for, you know, being away from, you know, the, the circles that they have there. So.
I just, you know, we spent so much time and effort on what we did that I just wanted to.
Well, you know, the, the benefits on what you did, you know, we've got a very, very reliable water system and, and I, I hope that people can see that, you know, that's what this, this is, the intention of this is to continue to keep our, our system reliable and, and, you know, meeting expectations.
Well, and you know, we should be very proud is, knock on wood, that I don't ever recall losing water, not through all of the hurricanes, not.
Well, that, that's one of the things that I've, I've been most impressed with the town since I've been here is, you know, the reliability of our water service. I mean, between the commission and staff and the, and the engineers, y'all have done a great job over the last ten or fifteen years getting the water system to where it is. Cause I believe it wasn't that reliable going.
Oh no, it was a really big shock when we realized that we didn't have enough capacity. It was a very big shock. And we did have a boil water one time, but.
You lost, it was a holiday, I think Thanksgiving, you lost water.
Yeah. So I just wanted to ask, because of your concern, and I do remember the efforts that we had to do and, and we had our landscape, you know, here at one night and we were selling it to the community of what we were gonna do to the park and make it beautify. As you would look at that park now, it's unbelievably what it looks like now compared to what it looked like back then. And one of the things we sold was ornamental fencing and landscaping. So the intent, and, and we sunk that ground storage tank.
Yes, damn.
Level, it was no higher than the building that's out there now. And that's how we, so what the intent of this well would be, same idea. The well sticks up out of the ground, put a black ornamental fence or any color, but basically we'll screen it with landscaping. So you're not gonna see it. It's gonna be just like you see the fencing out there now and all that beautiful landscaping out there. That's what it'll look like. So.
Specifically to the north side where the trail is at, where the, you know, people are walking by.
It's gonna be closer to that, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. But they'll, they'll have nice, you know, smell some flowers. It'll look good. And it won't be an eyesore. But it's necessary for the town because you lose either one of those, the pace you're all grown is not gonna be good.
We don't want to do that. We don't want to lose water. We I, I remember how Parker was at the last hurricane. And he thought he was on plan three, so.
He couldn't wait to start working three months, I remember.
It'll be, it'll be nice. Well, we'll make it nice.
Do we need to vote on this or is this?
An update.
Update.
The, the big vote will be coming up to fund it through the budget.
Yeah.
Thank you guys.
Well, thank you very much.
You have our two favorite engineers.
I didn't say that. Bye. All right, public hearing, second public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh four.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one oh four and ordinance of the town of Oklahoma, Florida granting a special exception use permit to allow the establishment of a school grades K through eighth grade at six oh eight West Oakland Avenue providing for severability, conflict and affectusate.
Okay, so evening and I hope the shortest presentation that you have tonight. At the family Christian school in the old church property of the machete. And so you could.
I'll turn in just a second.
Yeah, okay. So you all pretty much know the site, the surroundings, and there's the existing site. And moving along, you see the revised traffic circulation plan. So there's various stipulations. They're all the same so far, what you heard last time. And I will tell you that our traffic consultant is here and I believe that the applicant is, their traffic consultant is on, on virtually, and, and they're here to explain and give you their, their plan for their traffic circulation. They have a lot of little details on there and you have it in front of you. So you can look at that and I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you all, Dennis Lee again. And as Jay said, David Wright, our traffic consultant, is actually on the phone here as well. And he'd probably be the best person to kind of talk through the, the plan. And obviously we're here to answer any other questions as well that you have, but.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the table. I know we had questions last time about traffic flow and how things would work with crossing over the trail. So, and.
The, the first, the biggest one was getting out where you've got to go over the trail and then you got a little bit and then you get to Oakland Avenue. And that was the, the main concern. How do you deal with that? And your, your traffic folks, are they going to be adults? Are they going to be kids that are safety guards? I just, how's that whole thing gonna work to get through? Cause that's a very, very bad place right there. You add to it, it's right on a.
It's right on a bend. It's just, it's just, it's a recipe for a nightmare.
Scott, maybe you can speak as to who are you planning on maybe having up there? And then David, of course, you, you're probably better to answer kind of the, the technical question of what the best process is for the cars as they're exiting. Do they stop behind the crosswalk or how that kind of interaction takes place?
Yeah, we plan on using faculty members and parent volunteers. And I'll basically work very much like a school, you know, cross school crossing guards. They'll have vests on, they'll have a stop sign placard again to stop the bike trail people to really conduct the flow on Oakland. But, you know, your big concern was the safety primarily of the bikers, you know, the joggers coming down the trail. So we'll be setting up a system of cones. We'll have each side manned by crossing guard to stop traffic should a kind of car, vehicle approach that crossover lane. And that'll be effective. We're also considering putting signs fairly, you know, maybe fifty yards or so down each end of the trail, kind of warrant bikers and stuff that you know, crossing a guard, you know, so they'll be aware of that before they reach that intersection.
How far back?
About fifty yards.
On the trail?
Yes, sir.
Is that listed somewhere? Is that gonna be listed somewhere? Is that gonna be listed in the? Yeah, I'll give them time to stop if there's bicyclists. So you guys are gonna be moving the cones out of the way for them. You just put them in the front to stop the traffic of vehicles, opening up for pedestrians and then turn it around.
At the end of, at the end of the traffic period, we'll pick those cones up, take them in so they won't be hindrance there on the trail. And then we'll put them back out in the afternoon when the pickup line, you know, traffic.
Including the fifty yard.
Yes.
Signs.
How many students again? Just to reiterate.
You know, the maximum we, what we would run is a hundred and fifty. Right now, we're at like a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen.
Okay. There's some alternating times too with those.
Yes. Yes, the original stipulation was we do stagger times, you know, where the younger kids get picked up first, you know. So about every fifteen minutes, we have maybe three grades worth of traffic coming on, you know, to pick up their, their children. So it's staggered. So the traffic won't, you know, back up. And as I mentioned to you last time, the maximum length of our line has never reached, you know, past six hundred feet, six hundred and sixty feet. So we've got actually on the property to handle that, that number of cars.
And this is a private school run and based. I just want, I, and I know this, but I just want people to understand that this is not part of our charter school.
It's a, it's a non-denominational Christian ministry.
And, you know, my concern, as, as I stated before, is that road is really going to be extremely impacted by many things in the next couple of years. So as we know, pick up and drop off at schools is very, very difficult at times. Especially when you're crossing over a trail. A bike trail.
Hopefully we've addressed that concern with the crossing guards.
Yeah, and David, I don't know if you can speak to, I, I know in, in the staff report, it talked about the previous use of the church with Jose Church and Faith Point Church. And, you know, David, you might be able to speak to, I don't know, the number of trips associated with some type, type of use like these churches versus the school. It sounds like the impact from these churches wasn't very substantial, maybe on an Easter holiday. And obviously the, the capacity of the facility today is, you know, much larger than 150 students. So I'm not sure, you know, if David, you have anything to kind of speak to what that might look like versus, you know, previous trips or?
Well, the, the difference though between a church and a school are hours of operation. So the school is going to operate a very different time schedule than the churches. But I guess I would point out that the, the property has a significant amount of storage ability inbound and outbound. And with the addition of the, the yield sign and a, and a person posted at that location to make sure that the inbound traffic can keep flowing in and we can stack them up on the outbound side. I think will lend itself to providing a safe environment for people to come in and out. We're also, based on the review of the initial traffic study, we're adding a right turn lane on Oakland Avenue inbound. So there, there will be additional storage that we're not even showing on our, on our exhibit that will provide more places for, for cars to stack up. So I think the, the, the new school has made the effort to provide a, a plan of something that will work. And obviously this is not etched in stone. And if additional issues crop up moving forward, then the plan should be tweaked and make sure that providing a, a safe in and out for school traffic, for the trail traffic and, and everybody involved.
Yeah, I love the idea of having additional opportunities for school for our children here in Oakland. I just am worried about that end of the road.
Don't be afraid of the short term.
Pardon?
I say, don't be afraid of the short term effects because I think, you know, we're here to benefit the community for years to come.
I've had a couple of conversations the past week with Jennifer Hunt at the preserve. And her biggest concern is, you know, they got a lot of good for tortoises out there. And there's always a problem with them getting ran over by cars as it is. Now we'd be adding a whole lot of traffic every day. She's, she would really like to see speed humps put on the machete trail. You know, I don't know that that's going to help or not, but just having some problems with this because we got O N P right there. We are really proponents of O N P. And now we're putting all these cars and I just hate to see, you know, killing more turtles.
Does the fact that during the traffic hours, there are some folks out there kind of monitoring help? Fact that they would maybe notice some of those turtles if they happen to be on machete trail where the cars are. I know that the cars that are entering and leaving the church facility, I mean, school, excuse me, are not going quite down nearly as far as they would to enter the preserve. They're, you know, just going to that first, you know, 100 feet. So I don't know if that might help.
You have a school staff there north of that, right there where the yields at, right?
We have, we have lowered the speed limit on machete recently. It's 20 miles an hour for that very reason.
What is the speed limit in machete?
We lowered it from 25 to 20.
And again, the access and the regress point is, you know, closer to the, you know, to the Oakland Avenue. We're not going down the length of, you know, a machete.
Any further thoughts or questions at the table?
I know, I know it was mentioned last time about the classes that want to be coming over there now to, you know, once COVID is released, you know, gone away. Did you mention that again as far as, you know, the educational classes?
The Montessori school uses.
Different schools coming, coming over there. I mean, that's going to be another factor too, as far as people coming for field trips and things of that nature.
So if they arrive while our guards are there, they're going to benefit from.
I mean.
That service as well.
I really like to see the school come to Oakland. I'm just, it's the location, I guess, got a big problem with. I really would like to see you guys in Oakland. I just, it's just the location here.
Are they field trips, are they daily or certain days of the week? Like, or 10 O N P?
I, I, I don't know that it's daily, but there, there's a number of times a week that they come, the Montessori school does.
Two times a week.
Yeah, okay, I thought, yeah.
No, it's two times a week with the Montessori and then we were to return.
That's eventually, that's what I thought.
That would be, that would be on Wednesday, right?
Does anyone happen to know, you know, and again, in the staff report, it kind of talks about the church existing use, how many attendance they would typically have at a service versus 150 students again that are alternating? Was, was there more than 150 members of the church?
But it was on Sunday, so it was nobody there.
Yeah.
It had church on Thursday.
But not in the daytime, not in the morning, afternoon, yes.
Would there be any other kids attending the Oakland Nature Preserve for trips too for any of your students?
Yeah.
Are they allowed to come to our?
We've been, we've taken field trips there in the past, you know, we've had horse cars going in, just the same as Montessori does. But now we'll just be able to walk, walk over.
We're going to allow them to come use our.
Sure.
Nature Preserve, correct?
Yeah.
There's, they can work it out for, you know, for field trips.
Speaking of, speaking of fees, what's the tuition for a year there?
Right now it's 6,500 for, not 6,300, I'm sorry, for elementary and then 68 for middle school. Compared to some of the other private schools and Christian schools, it's pretty low.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I don't think there's anybody. I don't think there's anybody sitting at this table who doesn't want a school.
No, you know, and we've been fighting and fighting and fighting, trying to figure out how to get higher grades in. Because you're right, that's, we all want that. It just, I guess, one of these things where timing is everything and it's just so much going on right there. And it's just a hard time for, to add, to add to it. I just, I'm not convinced anymore than I was the first time, if there's any better plan, that that's going to work. I don't know what you can do more to explain it. So I'm not saying you're not, you're leaving anything out. It's just, it's just such a hard bend. You got a trail, you got other school stuff going on, you've got the, the apartments going on down the road and you're right in the middle of, you know, your regular operating hours for everything on Oakland Avenue. Once we, and once we start working and you get the, you know, the work going down on the other end there with, with the roundabout and stuff like. A lot of people are going to be coming down into Oakland Avenue. And we can say, don't be shorts, the short sighted with it, but you know, the short sight that I see is one kid gets hit. And that, you know, that's just, that's, it's devastation. That's the worry if somebody gets hurt.
And the short side, side of this is, you know, it's two years, I would say about.
Yeah. Two years of all that bottlenecking Oakland Avenue.
It's very hard just pulling out of there now or the, you know, ended, running a curb, trying to see if a car is coming or not. And you're trying to come out of there bad.
Same thing with Trailside or not Trails, where my nephew lives.
Trailside.
Trailside.
And Ohio.
Will we have a police officer there, there to direct traffic to help you guys?
They'll have, they'll have staff.
Can you hire a police officer on Oakland Avenue?
I don't know what it costs, but we could certainly consider that.
We don't have the staffing for that, to, to be able to do that every day.
But they hire them?
We, we're short on, on reserves as it is right now. He peaks can speak to that.
Due to the size of the Oakland Police Department, we can't hear it to you, we could have an officer around you. Even if they would hire someone.
Of doing.
Department is not big enough to support that kind of infrastructure.
So I am going to look for a motion and then we are going to take public input.
Can I, is it okay if I add something just real quick?
Sure, go right ahead.
I, I just wanted to point out that you should realize that the, in the afternoon, the school traffic peak hour is quite a bit offset from the regular commuter peak hour. And so the, the school peak will really be gone before the four to six, the two hours between four and six, when the regular afternoon peak hour traffic occurs. So just something to consider that those, those afternoon peak hours do not match up.
In the morning, what time are the kids coming in?
They come in about seven 40 on Monday, Tuesday and Thursday and 10 o'clock, like nine 40 to 10 o'clock on Tuesdays and Fridays.
So again, that, the, the second half of that is offset from the typical seven to nine AM commuter traffic. So I don't think the, in our analysis of the capacity level of service, the queues backing up coming out of there showed pretty good levels of service during those times.
So I was going to, if, if the school weren't to, to move forward with the purchase here, obviously this facility is existing. What, what types of use could go there without coming to, or what kind of traffic would, would those have? I mean, as, and the school is pretty, you know, restricted on their size, 150 students. But I didn't know if, you know, what kinds of things could go in there if they didn't move forward. Is there?
I don't know at this point, you know, in, in the environment we're in right now, I don't know. They would do it, to be honest with you.
I didn't know if there'd be different traffic concerns, maybe worse, so.
That's a good question.
It is. It's a very valid, it's a very valid question.
It is, because we don't know what we could possibly be sitting here in the future, trying to decide then. If it stays in the church realm, then it's a Sunday thing. But if it, someone else proposes something and it gets sold, we'll be facing something that may not be.
No, we have the same problem.
Same problem. Correct.
I guess I just didn't know if there's, there's probably things that could be approved that don't have to come to this board. I'm assuming based on the current use. So the special exception obviously had to come here because it's a school for the 150 students. But I'm not really sure per your code, what types of things could go in there without coming to this board if it wasn't.
That, that would be a question, okay.
I think it is a good question and, you know, you're facing special exception town. Eventually on, on anything just about, it's going to go there because the church was kind of grandfathered in, had a certain level of activity and it wasn't a lot of, there's very little police responsibility there. As was explained to me, there just wasn't a crowd there. Just one, you know, one time when it was sick or a couple times they would have. Had police there just for Easter. It wasn't anything very to speak of. And so you have that and then you have the school, which is going to be a constant kind of a thing. And so I think that's a fair question for the town commission to, to consider. And because, I don't know if it's any different say than, you know, approving the subdivision out there in Ohio. You know, with several hundreds of units and people going across and basically hitting the same, same issue there. But that's all residential, kind of low density, low intensity kind of stuff. And here you'd have, you know, basically you're right back into conditional uses, whatever those are. Some kind of public assembly, public kind of use. That is a good question, but I think.
So basically anything that goes in there is a special exception.
Pretty much the kinds of uses that you allow in that zoning district are special exceptions.
So special exceptions, do we not have it down the street for the church? Do we not use our officers for the entrance and the exit of the church?
On Sundays, yes.
Do they pay for this?
They pay for that. We can support, like, that's just one officer on one day a week. We're talking five days a week, morning, afternoon, patrol staff. Due to the size of Oakland, there's only eight officers for the two zones for the whole week. That means the only officers doing this would be the ones on their days off. That's four officers for five days, morning, afternoon, I could support that.
What about just morning skipping Wednesday, which starts at?
It would still be difficult to do because you're having officers working their days off every.
But can you, okay, so riddle me this. Can the school, it would be, the onus would be on the school to find off-duty officers from other jurisdictions?
We've done that sometimes for some events we have. Claremont stuff is out sometimes, Winter Garden can't, Okobe, I don't think they would. It would be difficult to do that.
So.
Not as a full-time ongoing thing, but they'll do it for special occasion.
But they have to have permission, so if I'm an off-duty police officer, I have to have permission to do that?
Well, they give, well, any officer is approved by me. And then we post it out for the officers to volunteer. Costs, I can tell you right now, for what you guys want would be prohibitive. It would cost a lot. You're talking $240 a day for morning and afternoon, plus the use of a car. You're talking 250, 260 a day, including that. Then you multiply that times five, perhaps four weeks, times a year, and it's, it adds up.
That, that answers that question right there.
So you bet something. Yeah, I was just saying. I, I was just saying, you know, that there are people who are hired out for security and whatever, have you, officers.
I think Scott, you'd probably say, you know, since this isn't, this is a, a school that people choose to go to. While it may not be, you know, as expensive as some other schools, it's still expensive for people to go.
That's a lot of money.
And I think if it's, you know, safety is going to be a critical to you and also the parents, if, if they don't feel safe or it's a traffic issue for them, they're not going to be going to your school. So it's something you're going to have to figure out, want to figure out, so.
All right, I'm looking for a motion.
At this point, I would have to move for a non-approval.
A second. Okay, okay, we have a motion down and a second. So do we have comments from the audience?
Yes, sir.
It is missed.
So we all.
My name is Don Buehler, I live at 22 North Brock, just a stone's throw over here. And we have, my family has been involved with FCS for probably about eight years now. My, my granddaughter will be graduating this year and then going to foundation his freshman. And we had two other grandchildren who were involved, so we're very familiar with FCS. I very much appreciate the discussion today because.
I very much appreciate the discussion today because public safety, of course, is, is very important. We happen to have been members of Mosaic and went, went there with our family as well. And I know it was mostly on Sundays, but not explicitly on Sundays. The density of people and the flow of traffic with the church is multiple times more than what I've experienced. Because I still drive my daughter, my granddaughter to, to FCS at, at the current Buell Road facility. And that's not to minimize the things that you folks have been dealing with. There's no doubt that those things need to be addressed and, and it's, it's a good thing you're looking at that. I would say though, that FCS becoming an integral part of our community would be a boost for the entire community. I know Terry and Scott fairly well, just from my association with them. And the, what FCS does very successfully is bring the, the religious background. It's, it's a Christian school, but in a way that is not obnoxious or overriding or anything. And the, the hours that, that they run, the amount of work that gets done is incredible. We were, we just were very, very impressed with that. It would be a shame if we can't work this out. It really would. Because it would be good for the school. They're bound where they are in, in the, you know, in the church. And I know they've looked at various places. I think this is a great place. We're very familiar with it. I don't know what the configuration would be or anything like that. But I think it would be a very great asset for people in our community. It would be a lot closer for, for us, you know, than, than it is right now. But I really hope that you do consider moving forward with this. And then let's let our ingenuity and our creativity address this safety issue. So I just would hope that you do consider this favorably. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Okay.
My husband back there. We are Earl and Robin Brigham. We've been residents of Oakland for almost six years. My husband is the barber downtown Winter Garden for four or five years. Our granddaughter is finishing her second year at Family Christian and loves it. Their family has a special situation and search for a school that would fit their needs. Our son plays professional baseball overseas. Last year, when his wife and children went to be with him, it was during the school year. Family Christian bent over backwards to help. They sent all the schoolwork to my daughter-in-law, had several phone conversations with her to help everything go smoothly. That's a thirteen-hour time difference for a phone conversation. My point is, it's been more than just a school for them. The children are taught daily about Christ and Bible, and I think Family Christian would be more than just a school to the Oakland community. I've picked up my granddaughter from school many times. The traffic line is organized and efficiently run. We live close by on Darker Street. I look forward to riding my bike to pick her up at school. It's a small school that really is a blessing to these families and I think will also be a blessing to the Oakland community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's nice shirt, by the way.
Thank you. I went there. My son's going there. My name's Flor Potinia. I live at two-two-five-three Bayline Road, which used to be eight-thirty Hell Island. I just did the math. I think I own one percent of the land of Oakland. We have Farm Nine, Mitsur.
Fabulous.
My wife, not me. So if you need anything about flowers, she will give you all the information. Anyway, we've been Oakland residents for thirteen years. Our kids have gone to Oakland Charter School, our kids have gone to West Orange, kids have gone also to FCS. And I can tell you that when you think about school and traffic and things like that, it makes sense to be very cautious and to ensure that there's good traffic flow. However, in the way that the flow, I, I have seven children and all of them have been through FCS. So I have been through the game. As far as I can remember, the most amount of time it has taken me to get from the very back of the line to the very front is maybe six minutes. And that is because there's just not that many people. Most of the families that go there, there are multiple kids that go there. So when you think of a hundred and fifty kids, there's not a hundred and fifty cars. There's far less than that. They're also staggered. Many of the children go through what's called homework help. And so they stay afterwards or they come slightly early. And so there's a constant staggering of time. So I just want to get a, a true sense of what it looks like. Oakland Charter School obviously has a lot more children. We think of, when we think of a school, it's, it's nat, it's natural to think of the way Oakland Charter School functions. And it's a fantastic school and they do an excellent job with security and they have police officers. That's fantastic. But it dwarfs the size and the flow that, that would ever come close to the way that FCS would function. And so that's just from the practical perspective. From a perspective of community, someone brought up the question earlier to say, well, what, what would go there? You know, would, you know, what, what, if they would stick to churches, what church would go there? Would it be a church? Would it be something else? And, and I will tell you that as an Oakland resident for thirteen years and someone that lives a mile and a quarter from there, I want things and I never plan on moving. That I want things that my community get built with that is encouraging, that is supportive to the community, that has just good protoplasm that builds our community. If that changes and that's a large piece of land that's right next to something that's very, very dear to my heart, the Oakland Nature Preserve, something very important, you put something there or that somebody comes there, I, I think that that would be devastating. This is an opportunity that I don't think will come again for something that will be an educational environment. We have a lot of homes that are, are being built. There's a lot of children that are going to be there. There, there is need for opportunity for, for children to go to, to good schools. And we have a great school, but I think expanding is good. So I strongly, strongly consider, am asking you to consider to passing this motion. I appreciate your time.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have anybody virtually? Okay, back to the table. This is a very difficult decision.
It is.
Hard time with this, really am.
So we have, I think, and Becky's gonna keep me out of trouble here.
Yeah, she's gonna need to get me out of trouble too right now.
Well, I mean, we can let this motion die. Correct? Becky?
Um, you, you have a motion and you have a second. So unless the second withdraws their second and the person making the motion withdraws their motion, that's an option for you. Or you can vote on it. I think those are your two options.
Okay.
Can I speak into it before I vote in it?
I'm sorry?
Speak before we do anything.
Yeah, you can speak.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You can talk. Yeah, absolutely.
So I am happy with what I see as far as the precautions you guys took. And safety is very important to me for the kids, for something to happen, so. And I see the path of the a hundred feet before you make the turn into the building itself, which is probably less than a tenth to get to the entrance to the nature preserve, which is over a thousand feet. So I think that that part right there would be safe for the turtles and staff there. I also think that with that, turning lane is gonna give some time for the people to turn in. I, I'm, I'm happy with the fact that you guys open at, that close at one o'clock PM, so that doesn't interfere with our school and that you guys open at ten AM on Wednesday. I would like to see you guys consider hiring an officer at least the four days that are the main peak in the morning to start. But I would approve this. So I don't know if that's how I.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it or?
It's, it's on the, I think we have, wait a minute, okay, hang on. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did Joseph, did you have something to say? Okay, so I think we have two choices. We, you can withdraw your, you can withdraw your second, withdraw your motion. We can remove. Or we can vote on this motion. And then, then what happens, Becky? Get on.
Have a new motion, right?
Then you can have a new motion.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's try this. I, I, I am so on the fence with it because I think what you have is a product, is the right thing for the town. That's just, that's not the question at all. I'm just so scared of the traffic. But maybe there is a point where we just gotta go on a limb and say for the right type of thing that we, we, we take that chance. I'm gonna do something I've not done in twenty-three years of being on this commission and I will withdraw that motion at this point.
Rick?
Gonna withdraw the second first and then the motion.
I withdraw my second, but if this goes through, I really, you said you could have someone there to be watching out for the turtles. That would be really good. Okay, I'll draw my second.
Second's withdrawn.
And I will withdraw the motion.
Okay. Joseph, do you have any thoughts on this? Because you've been.
I, I think we're all, you know, we're on the same page. I'm just really concerned about the traffic. I know what's mentioned, you know, putting cones, you know, fifty yards down. I want to make sure that's listed. And I'll just do every, everything that we can, because, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think we're saying no. It's just the timing.
It's, yeah, you're, you're a victim of time of, of.
You got the bridge coming out, you got all the, it just, but you know, everything I would say was very compelling, you know.
I would.
I hope there's not gonna be a lot of traffic.
Yep.
I would say, I would say that if it were not something that was so compelling to have for our kids here in Oakland and for kids, you know, in the community itself, we would, we wouldn't even be on the fence.
Right, exactly.
Exactly. And I really do, I truly believe that when all of the construction comes to the west end of Oakland Avenue, that people are gonna be going out Tub Street to fifty, for the most part. I mean, you know, and hopping on the turnpike if they're going towards Claremont for sure.
Or going on fifty because of the roundabout, they're gonna try to avoid Oakland Avenue.
Yeah.
So the timing, like you said, if this was offered a year from now, two years from now, it would probably have been ideal.
Or two years prior.
That's why I bring the fact that if you had or considered, pull up, out of your resources, put a police officer for the two years that is gonna be.
But it's gonna have to be.
Traffic.
It, I think what we're saying is it's going, however you decide to handle it, it's got to be handled.
Yes. I think at this point, you probably understand our sense of urgency for that particular point.
But I still believe that it is a high quality and our town would benefit from having a school. And we don't have an option for our citizens who can afford it for middle school yet in our town. So this is also an opportunity that I wouldn't want to see leave.
I need a motion.
I will redo my motion to accept the second ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh four.
Are you gonna add any exceptions to that?
There's no exception to it, just knowing how we feel about the.
And terms.
And, and, and beyond it.
Well, yeah, this would include the determinants stipulations as part of the ordinance.
Right, yeah, that's all part of the order.
I'll second it.
Okay, this is, this is such a hard one and, and we're sorry that, you know, it, it's kind of, it's been a roller coaster. So it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments?
Is there anywhere we can revisit the traffic piece somewhere, you know, in the future, not saying, stopping it now. But can we have some kind of language? I'm not sure to, to evaluate what the traffic, you know, what's going on, you know, evaluate that.
To evaluate how we improve traffic management?
As far as, you know, how they're.
We, we can have something with, with staff reviewing with them.
Yes.
When they, when they open and then maybe six months after they open, reviewing their, their traffic plan.
Bring us, report to us too, let us know how it's going, because this is a very tough decision. I like to get some feedback how it went.
That's a good idea.
I'd be open to that.
Thank you.
Does the commission want to entertain the speed humps that Jennifer would like at all?
Can we make that a separate subject?
Okay, yeah, I, I would prefer to have that as a separate.
There's, you know, we're doing an evaluation of.
Speed limits.
Speed limits. Speed bumps, traffic calming devices. And speed tables are probably at the bottom of the list of things that we would like to do. We would like to see if we can do something different and, and I think that's a bigger subject.
But that will be part of the shitty road.
Okay, so hang on. I got your, I, I see you. I see you back there. I'll get, I'll get right to you. So Mike, you probably need to amend your.
I'm sorry, Mike.
I'll amend the motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one oh four with exceptions, including an evaluation between the school and the staff from the beginning to at least every six months until we're comfortable.
Rick?
I'm good now.
And Rick, are you good with us? Well, we will evaluate that.
Okay, yep.
Okay, now, sir. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other further comments, questions, thoughts?
Is the capacity in the, your capacity, is that in the, as far as the capacity of?
The capacity of students is added in there?
That's all in here.
Actually, one hundred and fifty, right?
Yeah, okay.
Anybody virtually? Okay. So call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes.
Don't let us down.
Where's the counts? When people come here and speak.
If you participate.
I, I think y'all have turned everybody around at this table, so that shows how important it is for people to show up.
Yes, you're right, Rick.
But this was a hard, this is, this was a very hard one for us. Very, very hard.
All right.
All right. There are other subjects that aren't so hard for me, like Parker.
I have a thing.
That's the right answer.
Somebody, somebody stood in for me last time he was out.
I don't know.
I'll defer to Commissioner McMillan to talk about Friday.
Okay.
But real quick, we've got the town cleanup.
Yes, we love that.
May eighth, the May fifteenth, and it's already been posted on Facebook. With the approval of the art contract, we're expecting, I believe, next week to start working the artists into the Heritage Center. With that, I'm going to work with staff. We're gonna come back with some recommendations on our rental policy. And I believe as, as we're starting to bring in some outside art, that we're going to want to curtail rentals in the Heritage Center and, and really maintain that to town-sponsored events. With the exception, we do have the executive conference room. We'll put some stipulations on that and most likely needs to be during business hours. But we will, we'll work through that. So I'll bring that back on, on a future agenda to amend our rental policy so we can include the building with those stipulations. Grand opening, I don't know if anybody's had any thoughts about when we want to do that, June, July? We do need to give staff some time to set that up. We just need, you know, kind of identify a month and then we can start moving forward. So I don't know if there's any particular month that's better than another. And we'll, we'll do it more of as an open house, probably a couple hours. We'll make sure our donors and our partners are there and then residents, so it won't. So it won't, we'll try to keep it compact enough, but more like an open house kind of a situation. So I don't know if there's any particular month that's better than another.
I think the summers is kind of slow, so maybe August or September.
I'm going to say towards the end of the summer.
And then that. August, September timeframe?
Everybody, everything, a lot of things shut down. People just, you know, families traveling and stuff, yeah.
So.
Tell me what, people are starting to travel like crazy.
Well, I'll work with staff and I'll identify either August or September and come back with some information on that.
And I would say too, the other reason for that is to give a little bit of time for a little more restriction to be set a little bit.
Right, right.
So we can get people. And they have them come.
Get a bigger turnout then.
Outside piece to it too, so you can, you know, you got no mask and outside, it's not like you had a stadium, so. Restrictions and as far as outside events, because it will be outside in the side.
Because if you're going to get the role in the south, we got to have a lot.
And I really, really want to see us start to expand our hours, especially on a weekend day.
Yeah, we're working on that too.
And a concessionaire. Why can't we get someone?
I was trying to work on something on the fringe, but if that doesn't work out, the RFP, well, I'll get that back out. We'll work through something. We'll get somebody in there. And on May 28th, we're going to have, again, have live music. I'm going to talk a little bit about May. May 28th, we're going to have live music in the afternoon again. And we're also, Ashlyn has been working with him down at the Winter Garden Heritage Foundation to do an art scavenger hunt.
Oh, fun.
I'll send this information out to the commissioners, and it'll be going out publicly at the end of the week. But it's a really cool little afternoon event between the two facilities, and they've got questions to answer and stuff. So I think it's a really cool idea. So those are both beyond the 28th of May. And I think that's, that's all I have.
Is that Memorial Day?
Yeah.
It's a Friday before Memorial.
We've taken that into consideration.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a great Friday to do stuff, so.
But I really want the grand opening to be, I want us to be very, very cognizant of our wonderful donors and to showcase what they've done for us.
We've got some wonderful donors and partners and stuff, so we'll definitely make sure we're meeting that. So was there anything else, Alicia, that I cover? Talk about Friday. It's Friday.
But it's Friday, you know, we talked about it before, April 30th is International Jazz Day all over the world. And so you're going to see a lot of stuff. They're already doing stuff this week. I already started some classes and some programming. But you will see that, I know Alicia, they got us on the actual International Jazz Day calendar. So, you know, people may be just Googling International Jazz Day events, and they might see what we got going on. But even though it's not the official event, because we're just going to just have music out there. So have music out there while the, we have, you know, people visiting our center, so it's going to bring some attention to our area.
That would be awesome.
We got benches and chairs already there, and then if somebody brings in, wants to sit on the lawn, I think we'll be good.
I think it would be great.
So it should be a nice time from Friday from 11:00 to 3:00.
Good. Okay, any other staff items?
I have one thing. So I still have some seats available for the West Orange Chamber of Commerce Economic Luncheon on May 4th, but I'd need to know tonight if you're interested in attending.
So I'm.
Yeah, I have you.
I mentioned that Tuesday.
Yeah.
For 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM lunchtime.
Correct.
Just in the morning, right?
11:30 AM to 1:30 PM.
So just let me know after the meeting if you're interested.
Okay. All right, Sal, we'll start with you.
You already took my.
She stole your thunder.
My line. I'm good.
I'm smiling under here.
OMP had bubbly on the boardwalk this past Saturday. Went really well. They sold all 100 tickets, and they had 90 people that actually attended.
They are hot to trot down there.
Doing good. Maybe Steve can confirm this. I'm not 100% sure, but I heard that $5 million from the state for Lake Apopka cleanup wasn't approved. Did you hear that?
I did. I heard from Joe Dunn today that the $5 million that they were pushing for, they're going to start earlier next year, and they're going to go from the governor down rather than trying to go through the legislature. There was money to do the connector over on the Lake County side, the Green Mountain Trail connector. And at this point right now, our, part of our ask is in the budget. So I'll, hopefully at the next meeting, I'll be able to give a little bit more detail on that for the wastewater project. But Joe's already planning, Joe Kilcham, Ryan Joe Dunn are both planning for the next, the next cycle next year for the St. John's and for Lake Apopka, so.
And I'm sure we will continue to support them as best we can.
It's really sad because we really need to help right now. The hydraulics is going nuts in the lake. And hydraulics is, hydraulics has a capability of doubling every two weeks.
Oh, wow.
It's already, I think, so they said it's covering 15% of the lake now. So really worried about the hydraulics.
Joseph, did you have anything else?
Um, no. That, you know, legislature session ends on, it's coming Friday. And so, of course, you know, there's a lot of bills coming our way that they're trying to prep what we can do here on a local level.
Oh, yeah.
Steven and Jen and still on top of it. Now, we could talk about some of the stuff that's going to happen.
And you have something going on on May 22nd.
You know, 22nd, so we got some time.
All right.
All right, I do have a couple things on the track on this school, but I just think on is.
Pam's standing up, so I don't know if I.
Standing up for the last 15 minutes. We worry outers that baby. Just so you know, the state has recommended that when they start school the first of the year, then it's going to be a voluntary mask and not mandatory. So they are dropping that, so depending what Demings does with it, we'll see. But just so you guys know, that is the recommendation from the state, so it'll be voluntary come August. The second thing is, and we want to talk about is our lottery. As we've come down now, we've got NPK, and as it turns out with this lottery, we had nine families of kids that were not Oakland residents, that their siblings did not get in because of the pecking order has to go with Oakland. Is it a problem or isn't it a problem? I'm not real sure of. Eventually, it's one that will solve itself, I think, and it will end up being mostly Oakland kids. But it, it was brought up at SAC that I should bring it up to see if we were even wanting to consider to make some sort of a pecking order change. I will say I'm not in favor of that, but it's something for you guys to consider. We don't have to make a decision on it right now. But it is a shame the kids that are outside of Oakland that have been gone to the school can't get their siblings in because of Oakland residents, but which side of that fence are you on with it? So something for us to consider and talk about as we get, you know, lottery is already done. Those nine families have to make their decisions. So we've got this year, it's not an immediate thing to do, but I just wanted to bring out everybody's attention that that is what is happening. And the third thing is, we've been going around and around for the last three months with hair color. Right now, the policy of the school is just like uniforms. Kids can't color their hair, you know, pink or green or, or whatever it needs to be. It came to the SAC that that's not like a uniform. It's a personal choice, and we should relax that policy. So Pam took it to the teachers. Teachers were flat split 50/50.
Oh, that's a no-win situation.
I said yes or no. I brought it after we talked about it back to SAC for a vote to bring consensus, you know, to us. And the vote was four to three to keep it the way it is and not have hair color because it is a school that is chosen to go to. It's not a public school. And if that's one of the policies, people can either bring it there or they cannot. So that was where the consensus went with the.
Well, it's the whole point of uniforms.
Well, that was, the people that say no said it is no different than uniform. The few that said yes said no, that's a bodily thing. It's not a uniform thing. Bottom line to it is, after everyone went through this for the last two months.
Yeah, it feels like a while.
Yeah, I think, I'm thinking two years we've been dealing with it, but you know, by going on. Anyway, when we brought it to a vote on what we thought was SAC, it was four to three to not let the kids have color in their hair.
We're not going to, I don't think that we, I do not have an appetite to manage SAC's votes unless it's something very.
And that's what I thought, so I want, but because of the sensitivity of it, we are the governing board and.
Right, we could reverse it, but.
Y'all need to be aware of it, and if you wanted to go other ways with it, then we would deal with it. But am I safe to go back with SAC and say that the vote stays the way it is with us? Or do you guys see anything different?
Yeah, I say let it stand.
Yeah.
Stands.
Stands, yeah.
Done. We'll move on to you now.
I got a question.
Yes.
Is the school eligible for any of the bonus dollars down here? Okay.
Yes, sir. We actually are expecting what's supposed to be $6,000, $2,500.
That's great.
Oh, awesome, awesome.
You notice she sat down.
So for a course of two years, you know what I mean? Like that's one of my.
Great. I, I do not have anything that I can think of. We went and said goodbye to, Steve and I went and said, made our farewells to Mark Marsh at Health Central. And that is, in my mind, a great loss to this community. He's moving back to Kentucky for the right reasons. Family and another hospital system, but he has made a major mark here in West Orange County. Oh, that was a pun. I'm sorry. He's made major contribution to, to the hospital in West Orange County. And the people. And there's no, I've never seen a servant leader like that ever. So, anyway, that's all I have. So, Joseph?
All right, if all hearts and minds are satisfied, let's adjourn. It's 9:03 PM.
That's a long one.